Welcome to the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council. May we please have the roll call?
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Chu?
Here.
Vice Mayor Morrison?
Here.
And Mayor Hillmer?
Here. Would you please rise if you're able and join us in our Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda this evening is public comment. Is there any one this evening that would like to speak to an item not on the agenda? Please step forward, tell us who you are, and we're very happy to see you.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here. I'm Judy Binsaka, a member of the League of Women Voters of Marin County, and I chair the Transportation, Land Use Housing Committee. And with me tonight is Ann Bateman, who is... What? Oh. Now, do I have to start all over again? Okay. And with me is Ann Bateman, who's our current president. We are both Larkspur residents, but we live in Green Bay, but we are Larkspur residents anyway. So, thank you, Mayor Hillmer, and councilmembers, for the chance to talk to you this evening on a subject that has become perhaps the biggest challenge to face Marin. That's the housing crisis that affects residents, businesses, and anyone connected with Marin, it seems. We're here to suggest a solution to that crisis. Build more accessory dwelling units, and junior accessory dwelling units. I assume you've heard about the ADUs and the JDUs. That's going to be one of our suggestions for the housing crisis. ADUs and JDUs help homeowners, and they provide such benefits as income from older people whose Social Security and pensions do not cover their health care and housing costs; home for a family member or members to live themselves; and for a younger person who wants to stay in Marin; for one or both grandparents who want to live with extended family; or a smaller home for homeowner who can rent the house to a family. Also, a home for a caregiver who would not be able to find an affordable place to live in Marin, so she or he has to keep at home. And then socializing with tenants, and this is important for older people especially because it prevents their isolation, and they have related issues for people living alone. So, having someone there can be quite a benefit. The League is asking the Larkspur City Council to help homeowners create more ADUs and JDUs. To achieve that goal, the League has some suggestions for you. Set a goal for new ADUs and JDUs in 2018 and 2019. Ask for staff dedicated to promoting ADUs and JDUs and/or helping homeowners with the permit process. Eliminate fees and streamline the process to create an ADU or JDU. Hold at least one public meeting to introduce ADUs and JDUs to the community. Provide online information for homeowners about how to add an ADU or JDU. Coordinate with other jurisdictions about how to create an ADU or JDU. And there is a unified website in San Mateo County, which your... Excuse me. Which apparently the staff is already aware of, the website in San Mateo County. And it includes something called an estimator about expected costs, construction permits, hookup fees, and estimated rents. Here are a few statistics that may encourage your action on this subject. Older adults live in 44 percent of Larkspur households, that's 2,592 households. 951 older adult households can add an ADU or JDU. In 2015, Larkspur failed to create any ADUs or JDUs. In 2016 and 2017, Larkspur created only one ADU or JDU each year. In parentheses, last year, San Rafael created 30 units, of course, they're quite a bit bigger than you are, but Mill Valley created 19 units. So, we know Larkspur can do better.
Could I ask you to clarify those words? I think what you're meaning to tell us is, for those jurisdictions, those numbers apply to people who applied for those units. The cities can't create those units.
Oh, oh, I used the wrong verb. Failed to create, oh, yes, you're right, create is not the right word. Yes, they approached you, or they approached the local jurisdiction, and that's how it worked, yes. Thanks for that correction, that's for sure. Anyway, we encourage Larkspur to really get involved in this because it's a great idea, especially for the people who live here, your citizens. So, anyway, the League is happy to, you know, suggest this and to encourage you and support you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. May I assume, just given my having known you for a while, that this is in addition to your enthusiasm for workforce housing solutions as well?
That goes without saying.
Thank you.
And as you've noticed, the number of units for workforce people hasn't exactly skyrocketed. In fact, it's just gone the other way. It's very... Marin is very difficult to get that idea through.
Councilmember Chu has a question.
Yeah, thank you for addressing this issue with us. One of the things during the presentation that we had gotten was that they don't have to be affordable. So, if you have any recommendations for us, can you also provide that?
Oh, as far as a range of rentals?
Their...
Rental amounts?
Yeah, they are not required to be affordable.
Okay, yes, I'm sure we're aware of that, but, I mean, we certainly support affordable housing, but then again, we also support housing for people who need it irrespective of, you know, their income. So, but, that's an idea. I can make a note and see what I can find about that. Thanks, Larry.
Thank you, Judy.
Thanks very much.
Appreciate it. And thank you, Ann, for your work. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address issues that are not on the agenda this evening? Yes, sir. Nice to see you, Dr. Meredith.
Mayor Hillmer, councilmembers, my name's Larry Meredith. I'm a Larkspur resident, and I'm here this evening to invite you to consider a goal for the 2018-19 fiscal year of having Larkspur become an age-friendly community. This is a designation that comes through the AARP. Most of the 11 cities in Marin County are well on their way or already designated, from Sausalito to Navarro. The importance is that it provides a lens through which all community services view what they're doing. The lens of an aging population, and in Larkspur, at least 25 percent of the current population is over 65, and the rest are well on their way. It's inevitable. We have a significant population, the ADU issues and the junior units, very important to living long, living well, and living in the community we love. Larkspur, the housing crisis in Marin, as been pointed out, is... It's enormous. So, helping people with second units to continue residing in their own home for as long as they wish, something that Marin Village is very much a part of, and I know you all support, is attached at the hip to making the community age-friendly. And most people, in fact, over 95 percent, want to continue residing in their own home for as long as they can, rather than going to the home somewhere else in some other community that is not familiar to them. I invite you to consider this goal. The budget is your policy document for the year. Unless it is in writing, in either a resolution or a policy statement, it doesn't exist. I invite you to make it real, make it 1819, as the year Larkspur becomes an age-friendly community. Thank you.
Larry, Dr. Meredith, I just want to also say thank you. Dr. Meredith started the Twin City Village, and it's just become quite a huge success. And it seems like every month we get more people getting involved, either as volunteers or participants, and just really appreciate all the hard work and efforts you put in to the villages that exist in Marin. It's really, truly is appreciated, and it's getting more and more known, and it's exciting to watch it grow as rapidly as it is.
Thank you. And I think I'm just fortunate enough to be doing something that everyone believes in, and if, on Tuesday, we have an annual happy hour. The Village, just to take this moment, is isolation and aloneness and loneliness is the carcinogen for older folks. And I think I read today in the stats that a large proportion of Larkspur residents live alone in their home. So, we have a lot of social events, and the one coming up is at the Silver Peso, Happy Lunch. Most people have seen the Silver Peso, don't know whether it's a biker bar, or what happens behind that swinging door. And there is safety in numbers, so on Tuesday, we're going to have a lunch at the Silver Peso and find out just what it's all about, and that it's very much a part of the Larkspur community. We should know and embrace it. So, thank you.
It's okay. Are there other members of the public that would like to speak to an issue that's not on this evening's agenda? All right, we'll move on to... We have no presentations this evening. We'll move to the consent calendar. Are there any items on the consent calendar this evening that members of the city council would like to remove for further discussion? Are there members of the public that would like to pull an item for further discussion? That being the case, I'll bring it back to the council for consideration of a motion for approval.
I'll make that motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. May we have the city manager's oral report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. We wanted to just report on a few items today. One is that we're getting a lot of inquiries about fire preparedness and want to let folks know they really should keep track on our website. We're going to be posting when there's events that folks can attend to educate themselves. We're getting a lot of contact from folks in the Neighborhood Response Group area that would like some feedback from our fire folks about what they can be doing. So, we are aware of this interest, and we're dedicating resources to it, just wanted to make the council aware. And then, secondly, just some calendaring stuff. As you know, we won't be having a July 4th council meeting. We'll be at the parade hopefully in the morning and then relaxing that day. And then, we've already canceled the first meeting in August, but our calendar's looking pretty light for staff, so in all likelihood, we'll be proposing in the next week to be dark for the entire month of August. So, we'll confirm that with you. Just wanted to make sure there's no problems that we create operationally, but it's going to actually allow staff to focus internally on... I know Mr. Toff is writing furiously all through the summer on the general plan update feedback that he's been getting from his committee. We have some other staff projects that will be helpful, and it'll help with the summer break. Lastly, we've gotten our first formal request to have restricted parking within a neighborhood, something the council's asked about if there are any inquiries coming in. We do have one now. Staff will likely be scheduling a forum with the council to discuss, because we don't really have clarity on what our policy should be with this type of restricted parking requests. We know others, other neighborhoods are going to be watching and considering and looking at what we decide, so be ready. We'll try to advertise that. We suspect there's a lot of interest in the community on both sides. The problem is the high school. It's overflow parking from the high schools in the neighborhoods now, and it's reached a level where it's causing frustration. So, that'll be a focus, but I think it's just as you all have neighborhoods and residents upset with the amount of parking occurring in their neighborhood, you're going to have parents concerned about, well, where does my child park the car? So, something I look forward to. Turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Morrison has a question.
What do you mean by restricted? Red zoning, or are you going to...
No, this is a request to limit parking, street parking during school hours to residents. And that's done in several of the other Marin communities. So, we have...
How are you going to enforce that, do you have a little...
Well, that'll be the focus of the discussions, the different ways it can be enforced. So, we'll save that for the item. But it's being done in other communities. We're not going to invent the wheel here.
Sure.
Well, we'll tell you what some of the other communities have done.
Great.
But that's what the request is.
Would you... Not tonight, but give us some information on what, if anything, the high school district has discussed regarding this issue? If you want to ask them...
They're very aware. I've informed them for two years that this request would eventually come.
Councilmember Chu?
We used to have a liaison process with, you know, Tamafe High School District, and we haven't had to use that mechanism since the courtyard. Would you suggest also a council member reaching out to say one of their board members? I mean, is that... I don't know if they've addressed it at a policy level.
We should save a lot of this for the forum. What I would only say to the council is, I think outreach would be great to the district. You have a simple problem. There are no more parking spaces at the high school, and there are a lot of kids driving their cars. I mean, I think all the outreach you do doesn't change that equation, and you've now got neighborhoods that are getting frustrated.
Yeah, I don't think it's a matter of outreach. It's a matter of starting a discussion about what some solutions are. I think there's only like one or two, because we've had these discussions before, but...
I mainly raised the issue to understand what the opportunity presented to them, how that worked out, because it gave them a chance to fix it. If they don't want to fix it, we will.
All right, well, I think...
Yeah, this is... I can tell you all the story right now, but I think we should wait.
We should wait till we have more details, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. Any questions for the city manager on his oral report this evening?
No.
Anything else, Dan?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Councilmembers' oral reports and comments this evening. Councilmember Way?
I have a few, so bear with me. Last Thursday, Kevin and I both attended the ABAG General Assembly, and there were about 10, six Marin councilmembers there, and they presented their budget and work program, and Kevin is our representative. I'm the alternate, so he participated in the vote. There's a lot of detail in this, and I'd encourage everybody who's interested to go online and see what they're doing for Plan Bay Area 2020 and 2040. They also presented sort of Measure 3 regional projects that they're planning on doing. It was a little contentious, the 10-minute meeting, lasted about an hour and a half, but it eventually was voted on. You get a bunch of councilmembers in a room from all over the Bay Area. There's a lot of wordsmithing of some of the rules, but anyway, that was voted on, and Kevin voted on it for us. And then, in the afternoon, they had breakout sessions, and Sasha McIntyre and I both co-chair a disaster part for the MCCMC. So, we... I went to the Wildland Urban Interface Fire discussion that they had, and she went to earthquakes, so we're going to share that information. But, only thing I wanted to point out to us is that there's a lot of material in there of lessons learned, primarily presented by a board of supervisor, representative from Sonoma County, David Rabbit, and then a Napa County Board of Supervisor member, Diane Dillon, and then Henry Gardner, who had been the city manager for the city of Oakland during the Oakland firestorms and also the earthquake. So, they really did a great, I thought, presentation about lessons learned that they wished they had done in advance, and I'll write that up, and we can have a further discussion about it. One of the things that the supervisors focused on was a little bit more about what they needed to do as elected people, and wish they had had more public information experience, how to speak to the press, how to confront angry residents who come to the city council members. And I was really intrigued at the idea that we might want to think about having some type of workshop for us about sort of crowd control and public information. So, I'll write that up, because there was a lot covered on that. They did mention that this weekend, the Marin planners are having a sea level rise workshop here in Larkspur at Larkspur Landing. So, I wanted everybody to be aware of that. I'll probably go. It's on Sunday. It's called the Shrinking Shores, and they chose our town, Larkspur Landing area, because that's going, as Neil knows, we've talked about this in the general plan, going to be one of the most impacted transportation corridor areas because of sea level rise. Third thing is that the NRG Committee, the Neighborhood Response Group Committee, has a great website now and a newsletter, and anybody can sign up for this. Just go on energymarin.org, and it's full of lots of information. The Howards have done an excellent job, and now they've turned it over to a new employee, Lori Rice, and she is taking over this project and will be answering to the city managers and working through the Corder Madera City Hall area. So, thought that was a really interesting newsletter for people, and part of it was also talking about vegetation management that we're doing. And then, lastly, I wanted to congratulate our colleagues in the Twin Cities for the election results last night, although they're not final until the last vote is counted. It looks like Eli Beckman overwhelmingly won, and Bob Ravazio, and then there's a one-vote difference between the third and fourth candidate, and they'll know by... But I'm looking forward to working with two, at least one new council member, or there will be two new council members eventually in Corder Madera, and I congratulated Bob Ravazio about that. He will be back as my co-chair on a couple of these committees shortly, hopefully after the end of the summer, so that's my update.
Thank you very much. Very helpful information. Other councilmember reports and comments?
I'm going to real quick.
Vice Mayor Morrison?
On May 25th, the Lark had the student filmmakers showcase, and they had over 50 students make films, and they had over 150 people attend, so it was a huge success. And Ellie and the other staff of the Lark thank us for contributing to allowing this showcase to even occur. I went to the Larkspur Corder Madera School District meeting. I have to tell you, the superintendent, the principals, vice principals, staff, they're incredible. We are so fortunate to have the people that are involved and running the schools. They talked about how they did a survey to all the parents and to the teachers and the students. They don't have the data back, but it's amazing how involved and how committed they are to not only academically make the schools so incredibly superb, but also they're involved, the student bodies, making sure the disciplinarian is a constant concern, just as the Hall Middle School. They had nine students that have many suspensions, so if you get that amount, you cannot graduate. So, they really worked hard, working with the families and the students. They took the nine down to three, so they're very proud of that, along with... They, all the kids have to do a kindness tree, they have to get involved with that, and before the kids attend schools, they have to watch a video, which is taking positive action. So, all the schools are quite involved with the student body and the academic world. Very impressive meeting.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
That's it, for me.
I would only offer that at today's board meeting of the Smart Sonoma Marin Area Rail Transit, the general manager announced that Smart received a single award from the California Rail Transit Association for their work. They were in competition with projects in Los Angeles and Sacramento.
Yes, that's great to hear.
It was one award for the whole state.
That's impressive.
And work is continuing on the Larkspur extension. There was another appropriation today for several million dollars to keep that work going, so that is on time and on budget. We'll move on with the remainder of the agenda this evening. We'll open a public hearing for Item 7.1, Ordinance Number 1027, amending Title 15, Building Regulations of the Larkspur Municipal Code to add Chapter 15.55, establishing an expedited building permit process for electric vehicle charging stations. May we have a staff report, please?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Hillmer, and members of the city council. I'm Neil Toff, the Planning and Building Director. This item is brought to you in response to a state mandate, AB 1236, which came into effect late last year, which does mandate that states that cities and jurisdictions adopt a streamlined approach to electrical vehicle charging stations. And what the state is seeking to achieve, and this is for, you know, very good purposes, is implementing consistent statewide standards across the board and removing unreasonable barriers to electric charging stations. So, this code section that we would be adding is consistent with state law, and it would allow our jurisdiction to administratively approve applications for vehicle charging systems that meet certain technical requirements. The building official's review is limited to health and safety requirements under local and state and federal law. However, the building official may, does have the option to make a determination if there is any adverse effect on public health and safety to require a use permit, and more or less follow a process that helps to mitigate any potential impact to the community, community health and safety. And that use permit decision can be appealed to the planning commission. As part of this, the city would adopt a checklist. It really provides a very streamlined standard, and we could, we're in the process of improving our online permitting system, so I think we'll be meeting the intent of the state law under that. Currently, we are pretty efficient in these types of permits. We review and issue residential EV chargers, often over the counter, or at least within three to five days. Residential and commercial sites can be a little more complex, sometimes one to four weeks, depending on the information and the particular situation. But the regulations only apply to building permits for the charging station equipment. We consider essential signage, parking lot striping, wheel stops, bollards, similar directional and safety improvements as ancillary to the equipment and the station exempt from discretionary review. However, additional features beyond those necessary for safe operation, which is designing compliance, such as fences, lighting, canopies, promotional signage, other similar improvements, may be subject to other zoning and/or design review requirements. So, we've tried to define what is exempt within streamlining. So, what we recommend, we have provided the Ordinance 1027, which establishes a new code section in the building code of the municipal code, and we've attached a copy of AB 1236 and a sample checklist for the council's consideration. We recommend you introduce and waive the first reading of Ordinance 1027, and take public comment, and continue the matter for second reading and adoption on June 20th. One request that I do have, one thing that did come to my attention this afternoon, is this is an ordinance that was modeled very similarly after our solar permit streamlining ordinances, and we do have an error where there was a carryover or a typo on Section 15.55.040. Item F, the second line refers to, based upon substantial evidence, that the solar energy system would have a specific adverse impact. We'd request that the council, in their motion, move to amend that language to reference an electric vehicle charging station, and we can implement that amendment in the second reading.
Are there questions of staff from the council members on this item?
I have just had one.
Vice Mayor Morrison, and then Councilmember Way.
Neil, with these charging stations, would we, would they take away parking spaces? How would you implement them?
Well, for commercial parking, currently, our zoning allows up to 20% of a parking lot to be, have efficient, energy-efficient parking stations, so we would consider these as a subset of that percentage. So it would fit within the 20%, it's, there's a sliding scale according to the size. So it, these are, these are units that could be implemented as part of a parking lot. So we would allow that.
Would not take up any spaces?
They would be, they would not eliminate parking spaces, but they could be part of a, of an existing parking lot as spaces that are, have limited time to turnover, requirement for turnover.
And what is the price of these charging stations? Do you know offhand?
It really varies. It's
What type, but I
Yeah, they're, they're, they're charged according to rates, and then there are others, the other thing is that we are now getting residential complexes wanting to put in charging stations as well. And so one thing we want to make sure is that those stations are, those parking spaces are dedicated to the residents and/or guests of the, of the complex, and that these are not open to the public or commercial spaces as well. So.
Good to hear. Thank you.
Catherine?
Neil, I was curious on the application, they have a checkbox for public right-of-way. What would be an example of that that you can imagine in Larkspur?
Well, in some cases, there are sites that are partial, there are parking areas or commercial areas that are partially located in the public right-of-way, or may have some easement in the right-of-way. So that was kind of a standard template.
Yeah, I figured it was. I just, I was just curious where we would put them in the, in the public right-of-way.
And of course, if, if we're doing them in the right-of-way, or if it is some other organization, they would need an encroachment permit as part of that as well.
Yeah, okay. That's all right if we don't have any specific example.
I don't think it would be a common event, at least private types of charging stations in the right-of-way.
Knowing our right-of-way, rights-of-way, it's probably a good idea to include something like that.
Yeah.
Other questions from council members? Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on this agenda item? All right. Bring it back to the council for consideration. Are there any, any discussion?
That makes perfect sense.
If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Anne's good at it.
An ordinance for adoption of, waive the first reading and continue for the second reading and adopting at the next regular city council meeting of ordinance number 1027.
I'd be happy to make that motion.
With the amended
With the changes.
The amended language.
That's right. I'll be happy to make that motion for ordinance number 1027.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move to the next public hearing, item 7.2, which is our fiscal year 2018-19 Capital Improvement Program and Budget. May we have a staff report, please?
Mr. Mayor, we're going to start with a presentation of your capital improvement program, and then we'll do the budget, and then we'll walk through each of the resolutions that you need to adopt this evening to approve the budget and its many elements, so.
I will note that we've had presentations on this material before.
You have, but it never hurts to go over it again, so.
I'm not, not worried about that. I just want to make the note that this is not the first time we've seen it.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to your Public Works Director, Julian Skinner.
Good evening, Mayor Hillmer, members of council and members of the public. Julian Skinner, Public Works Director. So tonight, we have for your consideration adoption of the city's five-year capital improvement program. So that's fiscal years 18, 19 through '22, '23. This slide just kind of shows where we've been. The items that are stricken out are where the public's had an opportunity to view this capital program in some form, and then at the bottom of the list here is where we are tonight for council adoption. And here's just a slide. When we talk about our capital improvement program, what we're really talking about is maintaining and improving our infrastructure. These are the, kind of the highlights of our infrastructure, obviously, the 33 miles of streets, 11 bridges, the storm drains, our parks, and our buildings. If we could read this slide, this would be a really short presentation, because this is the capital program all on, on one sheet. So there's a bigger version of this in your packet, and so it's broken down. I'm going to drill down into some of these, so you don't have to try and read this. But this is all of the projects listed going down the sheet, and then the columns are basically the fiscal years. So this is all of the projects we anticipate in the next five years, and then the funding that shows up in the fiscal year we anticipate it to be spent in. So I can't read this, so I'm going to drill down a little bit in the following slides. We've got it broken down into, as we did last time, some new projects, projects you've seen before that we call carryover projects, that either have new funding or funding in the future, and then future projects. So these are projects that are in the five-year plan, but that we're not ready to touch yet this year, and they have allocations in future years. So we'll start with the new projects. Again, these are all primarily Measure B funded. These are the same projects you saw as we previewed it the last time. So the, the bigger project is the actual paving. This is the first group of streets we're going to pave. $4.72 million is the total project cost. That's going to do about just under seven miles of streets. The next project is the ADA curb ramp installation, so this is a project that would install all the curb ramps on all of the Measure B streets. So not just the streets from the first project, but the whole entirety of the Measure B program will be done up front. And then the third new project is the patch paving, where we're going to do some interim repairs to some of those streets that we're not going to get to until later in the program. So again, as we talk about the Group One paving project, this is the adopted, says draft, but this is the same as the adopted five-year plan, and so what we're talking about for Project One is the streets that are in green there will be done in the first year as Project One. So that's the downtown loop area, west Madrone Canyon, and then up in the Greenbree Hills. This is a snapshot of the funding sheet for this project. So an attachment to this document, there's a funding sheet for every project in the CIP, whether they're new, carryovers, or future. And basically, the first set of numbers here are the proposed expenditures, and then the second group of numbers are all of the funding numbers. And so reading down, there's one of these sheets for every program. I only included the ones in the presentation for the new projects. But so this shows, if we look at the second group of numbers, that this project has $4.1 million of Measure B in it, and it shows that that money is all in the IMP, means it's all for improvement. So that's $4.1 million of Measure B going towards the improvements. And then the next funding categories down is vehicle impact fee for design and engineering, some vehicle impact fee for construction management, and then gas tax for construction management. So total project costs of $4.72 with $4.1 of Measure B in it for construction. So the second project is the accessibility improvements, and for the most part, these are the wheelchair ramps. And so the picture on the left shows a typical intersection of a subdivision that was built some time ago before wheelchair ramps were common. So you have sidewalk on the two streets, and then now by the ADA law, we're required to put a wheelchair ramp in, which is what you see on the right slide here, which basically is a transition between the elevation of the sidewalk and the crosswalk or the street such that a person with accessibility impairment can get from the sidewalk to the street. And here's the funding sheet for that project. So again, the funding at the bottom, 1.5 in Measure B for this project. And again, it's in the fiscal year 18, 19 column. The next project is the patch paving. So this is not a before and after, these are two separate locations, but typical poor street on the left, or very poor street, that shows some alligatoring and some potholes. Rather than just filling in the potholes with temporary mix, which is what we typically do with our maintenance crews over the winter, this project would do some more significant patching so that those streets have a better opportunity to get to the year three and four in our paving plan, and so we're not continually patching them over the winter. And again, here's a funding sheet for that, so $165,000 total for that project. The next group is the carryover projects that we're asking for funding allocations for, for this year. This list is the same as what we showed to you last time, other than we're not proposing on putting any more money in the storm drain master plan. We've looked at the amount of money that's left from previous allocations, and we believe there's enough money in that project to finish a storm drain master plan. So we've taken back the request that we had. We still got it shown up there, but it has a strike through, so we won't be proposing adding the money into that project. But the rest of them still are. Bon Air Bridge Replacement Project is the biggest funding request this year, so that's $9.6 million, primarily from the federal grant. And then right behind that is the $3.1 million for the Bon Air Bridge mitigation projects. So that's the, the two dock replacements, the dog park, the tidal marsh, and then the improvements at the Hillview Greenway, which is the stormwater retention under the Greenway, and then also the re-landscaping of the Greenway. And then moving down some smaller projects, we're funding $36,000 for some bike and pad facilities. These are small-scale projects. $25,000 to complete some improvements to public stairs. And then our park project this year is improvements to Niven Park, so that's $118,000 primarily from County Parks Measure A. And then an ongoing Doherty Bridge mitigation monitoring that's a leftover requirement from the Doherty Bridge project. These are just snapshots from those funding sheets. The next category here are carryover projects that we anticipate will be either complete this year or don't need any future funding. So these have been in the project, in the CIP before, and this is pretty much the same list that you saw last time with an explanation of how close the projects are to being complete. And again, none of these are anticipated to, to need any funding allocations this year. The next category are also carryover projects with no funding this year, but we anticipate some future funding needs down the road. So these are some longer-term projects or projects that we didn't have enough funding for this year, and they've got pushed a year out. This includes our downtown Magnolia Avenue ADA improvements that we know we'll have to get to in the next year or two. Hillview Garden Storm Drain, that's already funded for the preliminary engineering and the design work, but we'll need a future allocation for the construction work. And then the Villa Combray Slide Repair that doesn't have a funding allocation, because we don't have a funding source at the moment. So here are the future projects. So these are all projects that are anticipated to start within the five-year time span of the plan. And so the project number here, 20-201, indicates it's a project that we anticipate to be in the 1920, fiscal year 1920 CIP. So it's the next park improvement project, which is slated to be the Greenbree School Park. And then also in 1920, we anticipate Measure B Group Two, $7.36 million. And then the following year, we would have Measure B Group Three, followed by Easter Francis Drake and Measure B Slurry Seal Projects, all in 2021, all primarily Measure B funded. And then on to Redwood Highway Bike and Pad Improvements in 2021, and then looking out to 21, 22, Piper Park, some more improvements to that park would be the next park in line, followed by the last of the Measure B projects. This is a snapshot of all the funding. There's a lot of projects in there. If you add up all the dollars of all the projects in our five-year plan, it's over, almost $85 million worth of projects we're going to be undertaking over the next five years. You've already funded in previous budgets about $17 million of that through previous allocations. There's $9,000 of that that's still unused. That's a carryover. This year, with adoption of the CIP and the, and the budget, you'll be allocating the $19.57 million towards the projects. Those projects that are currently active have another $23,000, sorry, $23 million in funding throughout the life of the plan. And then that future list of projects that you saw that we're not going to start this year, that's another $24 million worth of projects in the plan. So the $19 million that you'll be allocating with adoption of this plan is broken down, as is shown on this sheet. Again, the, the big number is the grant, so that's the Highway Bridge Program for both the Bon Air Bridge and for the mitigation projects. And then the other big number here is your Measure B, or the proceeds from the, from the Measure B for the paving program, and then the bridge fund, which is our match for the Highway Bridge Program. And here's a look at it as far as how that pie chart for that $19.5 million. So again, the big chunks we're looking at here are grants and Measure B. Our other local sources, the vehicle impact fee and the, and the TAM, local roads, and gas tax on park development are pretty small slices in that overall picture. So that's the end of the presentation. Available for any questions?
Are there any questions of the Public Works Director?
Of course, Catherine and I always have questions.
Vice Mayor Morris, our council member Way, and then Vice Mayor Morris.
Minor short.
Minor short. Part of what we talked about, that A-Bag meeting, was getting FEMA grants and other things for damage that was storm-related. Is the Villa Combray Slide Repair, have any of that disaster mitigation money in there?
We have certainly applied for it. We did receive money from FEMA for our initial responses to the storms. So the work we did at the time of the storms for the cleanup has been reimbursed, for the most part, through both FEMA and Cal OES. The permanent repair that's needed for that slide, we put in an application for funding. It was denied by FEMA. We have since filed a, filed an appeal to that rejection. It's made it through Cal OES, and now we're just waiting for it to hopefully get approved by FEMA. So we hope to find out soon, because we would really like to get that improvement complete before the next rainy season. So I would anticipate you'll be hearing about that in a, in a future council meeting, whether it's the grant coming through or looking for alternative funding sources for that repair.
Was that for the full amount, or close to?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, I was sorely disappointed at the panel's response to how slow FEMA is to provide reimbursements, and, and in some jurisdictions, taking back the money years later. That was pretty astounding. My second question was, when I totaled up the numbers for the gas tax amount, that was something like $331,000 in the projects that we've already funded?
Yep.
And then how, how do I reconcile that with $181,000? That's
So which
I'm just trying, $161,000, which is like on page 10. There's a lot of talk now on the gas tax and what's going to happen in November, so I'm just trying to get a handle on how much it's fitting into our budget these days.
Right. So for this year, we have, we're proposing $100,000 of gas tax for the Measure B Group One.
Yeah.
And then the other are the small amounts that are going to the bike pad improvements and the public stair improvements. So the, some of those is the 161, 250.
Okay.
We have in the past budgeted in the $300,000 to $400,000 range for annual gas tax. I believe we got an email about a week ago that, said we should anticipate that number will be lower. And so we typically will budget up to that $300,000 a year, but we've left it purposely low.
Why would it be lower?
Because gas tax fluctuates with
Oh, the season, yeah.
Well, also with vehicles that are now more fuel-efficient and don't need fuel at all.
Yeah.
It's not based on miles traveled, it's based on how much gasoline people put in their cars. So it's, it, it has always fluctuated. This is the first year I think we've seen it go down as much as it has from the earlier projections we got.
Okay, thank you for that. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Morrison?
Julian, every time you give a report, I still learn something new. Julian, with the mitigation projects, I'm going to talk about the Greenway flood abatement, storm repair. So with Flood Zone Nine, where do they stand with this? I mean, do I need to get people from my, my neighborhood, get involved, coming to the Flood Zone Nine meetings? Do you need any support to make sure we get the funding?
So at the moment, the Flood Zone has committed to the partnering with the funding for the design phase of those improvements. We have a consultant actively working on the design of those improvements and doing a cost estimate, because the cost estimates we have for that are three or four years old now, so we definitely want to get that updated. Then the next step is to take that preliminary design and the cost estimate, and then go back to the flood zone, and then request an allocation for the actual construction money. So we're not quite there yet, but as soon as we get through this phase with the consultant, we will be going back to the advisory board to request an allocation for funding, so.
And is this going to be a year from now? What's the, what's the timeline?
I would anticipate it, well, hopefully before the end of this calendar year.
Okay, great.
Could I clarify, you're referring to the Hillview improvements, or you're referring to the creek?
Right.
As of yet, undefined?
So I assume this was for the Hillview Storm Drain, yes.
Right.
Yeah, we have an ongoing study of the rest of the lower part of the creek, and we're not quite sure what, that, how that will not quite sure what that, how that will turn out.
Okay, and then the detention basin, is that's part of the mitigation project too, right?
Yes, so the detention basin that would go under the Greenway is part of the mitigation project. So now that the bridge is moving forward, we're working on finalizing the mitigation plans. When Caltrans gave us the financial package for the bridge award, they included the mitigation projects in that amount. So that's why we've budgeted those amounts this year. The money's been pledged by Caltrans, so it's included in the budget, and we're moving forward to get those plans finalized. They'll have to go back through the permitting agencies again, once we're, have them at the stage where we want. But we were hopeful to get those out by the end of this calendar year, but it's more than likely going to be next spring and then construction next summer.
But it's funded?
It is funded, yes.
Not partial, okay. And then you know the ADA curbs?
Yes.
Are they going to be that stark white of the photos I'm seeing? Are they going to stick out?
Hopefully not.
Oh, good.
So I think one of the things that some communities do is they purposely put black coloring in their new concrete to make it blend in with the existing. The photo that I showed you, I don't think has that, but our standard for our project, this year at least, has some black in the concrete that makes it gray. You will never get concrete to match existing concrete.
I understand that.
But yeah, the stark white is something that we try to avoid.
Thank you.
Yes.
Other questions from council members? Councilmember Chu.
Yeah, I just thought of something along the lines of that mitigation project. At what point in the schedule do you plan on bringing Magnolia back to its, you know, previous state?
So we're still working with the contractor on his schedule. He's, for the bridge project, he's developed a four-year schedule, and there's different traffic handling scenarios for each schedule, depending on which portion of the bridge he's working on. And so what we're trying to do is we've really been drilling down into the first few phases because that's what we need to approve to get him going out on the site. But we're going to take a step back and look at that and see what the impacts are going to be on Magnolia throughout all of the stages because we don't want to go in and pave Magnolia and then find out that the contractor has to move K-rail around or do something otherwise that's going to impact the brand-new pavement. So it'll be some time over the life of the Bon Air Bridge project, and we're going to make sure that we put it in at a time that we're not going to damage a brand-new street. But I can't say at this point when that will be exactly.
Yeah, when do you think AT&amp;T will be done with their work?
The last, well, they've got many different components of work that they're doing out there with their fiber and their copper and some of their infrastructure. July 15th is the last date that we got for them, that they would be finished with work that would require traffic control.
That would be good because what their current bullabout is doing is that it allows fewer cars to queue into the portion where it starts to merge in the one lane.
Right.
So more cars you can get through there, at least just to sit there, at least doesn't make the intersection back up at Bon Air.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the Public Works Director on the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2018-19? Are there members of the public that would like to make comments or ask questions regarding this item? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Cindy Winter-Greenberry. I have just one question about the right-turn lane from Bon Air onto Magnolia. I'm not against having it there. I think it needs to be there, but every time I use it, I think there needs to be some tweaking. It's not friendly for a pedestrian or cyclist to go across that turn from Bon Air right into Magnolia. So maybe that could be looked at sometime.
Thank you for your comments. Other members of the public that would like to make comments or ask questions on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the City Council. Oh, we have a budget yet, sorry. Can't close it. All right, do you want to act on this item or do you want to wait until the budget?
No, this item you'll approve later when you go through the resolutions that are after the budget.
So we'll move on to 7.2B.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor. I guess the resolution is attached to this item, so why don't you go ahead and take it up?
The recommendation is that the council adopt the proposed capital improvement program for fiscal year 2018-19.
Through 22, 25, right here.
Okay.
So, so Dan, you want us to make a motion, is that correct?
The resolution's listed for this point in the agenda.
May I make the motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 4218, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Larks for adopting the five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years 2018-19 through 2022-23.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Item 7.2B, adoption of fiscal year 2018, 2018-2019 budget.
Paper, paper.
Hi, Kathy, thank you.
No, holy...
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to note that on the consent calendar this evening, among the actions you took is that you approved my recommendation that Kathy Orm have a new title, so I'm an introducer now as your Administrative Services Director, which I think is reflective of the breadth of work she's doing for the city.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Kathy, Kathy, yay, Kathy.
All right, here we go. Thank you for having me present the budget this evening, mayor and council members. We have been through several budget workshops already, so I think we've gone through it in detail. So tonight, I will try to keep it at more of a summary level, but anytime that you ever have any questions, please stop and ask me. And I think that most of this is pretty much the same, so... Okay, awesome, I'll do...
Really appreciate that.
You're welcome, I'll remember this. So our theme tonight is the general fund budget fiscal year 2018-19, pension costs, which I will keep bringing up and keep talking about, and then of course, always the challenges that come with the general fund budget. So our proposed general fund budget has revenues projected at $16.8 million and with expenditures projected at $17.2. We are showing a deficit, but we also are very conservative in our revenue numbers, especially in property tax. I am receiving estimates from the county now on a monthly basis, and so from March to May, the estimate has gone up by $27,000. So we'll revisit our revenues and our property taxes mid-year again to see where we stand and make sure we're on track. The same thing with sales tax seems to be healthy and staying, we've budgeted for $2.7 million, which is flat, but still a lot for the city. So we will just keep an eye on what's going on and see what we can do mid-year. The, what has affected the budget is, a lot of it's been PERS costs, so we also have contractual MOU costs that have gone up. But the big one for the city, and it is, will show in future years, is that the employees are now beginning to pay a portion of the normal cost of PERS. So the miscellaneous groups are paying an additional 1% towards the employer cost and fires paying an additional 6% towards the employer's cost. And then through, later on, when I have graphs, you'll be able to start seeing how that does help. Our cost is not going to help our unfunded liability cost, but it is going to help our normal costs with PERS. Have anything else to add? This is why you have the large sheet, because you can't read it on the screen, but I do like the printout of the general fund where you can see it in whole and seeing where our revenues are, where our increases are. Property tax, I have taken the counties, I'm beginning to trust the county, and I've taken their numbers, so we have a large increase in property tax and most everything else is staying fairly flat. We've done a few adjustments with the planning and building permitting is beginning to slow down, so the activity to remodel and do houses is slowing down now, so we're reflecting that. You can see a large increase in our PERS unfunded liability. I will say that when I book this number for budget purposes, I include the interest. So if we pay it in a lump sum, there is some extra savings there, and it's about $23,000. But it's, I do book the full amount in case we don't get to pay the lump sum for the whole year. So there is savings there. Other than that, I have a lovely group of department heads that really help hold the line and control their expenses. And when we say bring in your budgets flat, they really brought in really flat budgets and very conscious about keeping track of what they're doing. So it helps and makes my job much easier. So I have to thank all of them for their contributions in their budget pieces and bringing in flat budgets. And most of the increases that we see are either one-time and/or contractual MOU increases. So with that said, this is what our budget looks like in a, for the revenue in a pie chart, of course, property and sales tax being the largest piece, and all of our other little franchise fees and license permits penalties are coming in to help us out, too. This is a look at our pie chart for expenditures, police and fire kind of neck and neck with everybody else kind of taking out about half and half there for our operational expenditures. It's pretty normal for a city. Okay, we'll get into talking about PERS costs now. Our pension costs for, our total pension costs, I expect it to be about $1.4 million. And that's, last year, we came in at, we were projecting at $1.28. So we have like a 16% increase in total PERS costs. I mean, that's hard to swallow, and that's just the beginning. So the normal, the employer normal cost rate, this is where PERS is kind of arbitrarily or kind of artificially, I should say, had lowered those percents and added into our unfunded liability. So this is why the percents don't look bad and they're not growing at a very high rate, but then they keep adding to our unfunded liability. It's kind of like your mortgage that keeps increasing every year. For the miscellaneous group, we have several miscellaneous groups, but I've taken just the larger ones, the largest one of them, to show what the lump sums are going to look like coming up with the discount rate taking in account and the five-year ramp-up. So we're looking at some pretty hefty increases as we go. And these are not, this is not what the employees are paying into. This is what I was saying in the beginning, they're not affecting this amount. So there are some scary numbers that we really need to keep our eyes on. Pension costs for the unfunded liabilities for the safety plan, this is a safety Tier One plan for fire. Again, these are projections that are, you know, by the time we hit 2022, we're kind of doubling our costs. So, and I think every city is faced with this. I was at, I listened to a webinar last week from PERS, and their solution was to, well, just pay extra because if you paid extra, you could save this amount of money, you know? Or if you could save, if you could continue to pay extra, you could save this amount of money. And it's like if cities had millions of extras to pay every year, I don't know if they would choose to pay PERS down, but part of the problem is, is that their whole assumption is, is that we have millions sitting around that we can pay PERS off with. So, well, this is, this is their quote-unquote propaganda that they're selling to the cities right now.
But do they just don't care?
Well, they're good at making assumptions like assuming that we get eight and a quarter percent return.
And there's, well, yeah, it was an interesting, I was curious to see what they would come up with and how they could help the cities, but it's more about how you could pay down your interest or your fresh starts, which lower, you know, they're saying how you can then restart your pension plans, but you still, the bottom line is, is that you have to pay up a chunk of money to save on the interest. And that's true if, you know, cities had the money sitting around for that. So I'm open to suggestions. I'll keep my eyes and ears open to see what other cities are planning and doing, so...
Dan, why don't you share with us what you and Todd did, how you went to the meeting and what you said and the comments back to it? I just thought it was fascinating and saddening at the same time.
Do you mind? Does that put you on the spot?
No, no, it's fine. I reported generally to the council before, so, you know, Takus Manu is the town manager for the town of Corner Madera, and he and I were, attended the Finance Committee of PERS, which is a substantial portion of the PERS Board. We attended their last meeting. We were there specifically to discuss an assembly bill that we have concerns about. But in the course of dialogue with the committee, it's very apparent that there's no real sympathy at PERS for this problem on the part of local governments. It's a combination, I think, of, PERS has its own issues, they're trying to resolve a sort of lack of belief that local government can't figure out how to solve this problem, I think is part of the issue, too, because they haven't yet had the evidence. The defaulting agencies so far have been very small entities. I think it'll change their opinion when larger entities start to default. And as I've also reported, the council, the state of California has, the governor's office has said they've solved their problem. They have their 40-year plan to get out of their pension problem in terms of what they owe CalPERS. So I think there's also a prevailing attitude at PERS, well, if the state can do it, everybody else can figure out how to do it, too. Now, the state's pension liability is such a minuscule proportion of its budget relative to what the cities are facing. If you look at that 21-22 number, even assuming some escalation of the city budget continues on the path that we're on, you're still looking at potentially 5% to 10% of the city budget going toward these lump sum payments in 2012-22.
Councilmember Chu.
Yeah, I think they take kind of a revisionist look at, you know, the situation we're in because, you know, they created the original assumptions when, under SB 400. And even though the analysis was done by the Legislative Analyst Office after the fact, you know, they had all the information back then and again in 2004, what to expect given the structure that, you know, we're in. So for them to take that kind of position, I think is kind of revisionist history. But being that that's the position we're stuck in, you know, the state can pay theirs not only because it's a lower percentage of their budget, they, all they need to do is balance their budget. And balance their budget typically means that cities get less.
And they can tax.
Yeah. So really, when we go through some of our discussions related to, you know, pension, OPEB reform, it's less now about reform, but more about how cities and towns can manage their cash flow, you know, it's really about trying to reduce your debt service effectively. So if the only real solution you have is to reduce your future liability by putting more cash in now, then probably what we need to explore is effectively funding something at a lower... at a lower interest rate to pay them for not having to pay their discount rate. You know, we, we have the debt somewhere. So we'll just leave that for a future discussion.
Can't wait. That makes sense. I love to show it in pictures. I've added all the plans that we have in there and you can see that the blue and the red represent the miscellaneous and the fire department. And then you start seeing our other miscellaneous and our Pepper. So you can see how Pepper that has actually has really, will be helping, you know, in the long run, but not enough to be able to catch up with the rising numbers and, you know, of the cost of what we're going through or what we will be seeing. So this is both the normal cost and the unfunded liability. This is what our chart looks like with just the miscellaneous and the safety group for the, the undefended accrued liability costs and how steep they start going up. I, I think pictures kind of really show an easy, easy, it's just a easy picture to look at instead of just looking at numbers. But there's more because we have OPEB to also talk about. So we do a pay-as-we-go. This is for our retirees, we, for the medical payments. There, it's about $376,000 currently. We've had several retirements, so that number will go up next year, closer to the $380,000 to $90,000 mark depending on the employee. I think we've had four additional retirees and two that are coming up. So it has increased it by $27,000 over last year and then it's going to continue to increase because we do have an aging workforce. And we did open the Seibert Fund, so we are pre-funding it, the future cost for, for the OPEB. And so our current budget is contributing $300,000 to that. And then the goal was to reach 500 to 600 annually.
So just for those folks who've heard the word ARC, the, sorry, the abbreviation ARC, the annual required contribution, that number is the sum of the pay-as-you-go number and what you've said is your goal, which is to get that, that trust contribution up to 600,000. That represents what the actuarials told you is what your annual required contribution ought to be. Probably by the time we reach 600,000, we really will need to target 700,000 to, because the number keeps growing as, as Kathy points out, so.
Other debt services that we have, and really the city doesn't have a whole lot of debt service, but we do have, this year, we should be paying for our upgrade on our phone systems for $40,000. It's in the budget. We have the side fund loan. This is the bridge loan, bridge fund loan to the general fund. Annually, if we were putting it through payroll, it's about $330,000. We haven't paid that, it hasn't been in the budget. We are suggesting to pay the loan off this year, so we'll need the cash flow for the bridge fund. The bridge fund will need that money now that it is starting. So through reserves is what we're, what I am recommending, what we do, so then the bridge fund has money and then we can pay the loan off through, for the city. We also have the corporate loan, which is only $242,000 annual. We have an outstanding balance of 2.1. And then MIRA, which is the Marin emergency radio, is always, is, is a normal 37,000. That's usually what their bills are coming in at, you know, for their loans. Back to challenges, so pension costs are going up, up, up. And then it's the effect of lowering the discount rates, but this is, you know, 2.1 is last year, 1.2 is last year to 1.49 to 1.8 to 2.7. So we're looking at anywhere from 16% to 20% increases, somewhere in the middle there. And the discount rate started lowering in this, this coming year in 2019 through the 2021. So this shows the ramp up for the five years in there. So our other challenges is, of course, is funding the OPEB in 1819 for 300,000. This is where the, Dan was talking about the ARC. This is how, what the actuarials were saying that we need to get up to 1.22 million. The fund, the OPEB to, up to 500 by year 2021 was the council's goal. Use the reserves to pay off the side fund loan, I was, jumped ahead of myself, but we do need the cash flow for the bridge fund. That would be the 1.7. And out of that, and the Twin Cities Childcare also owes 88,000 and they do have the cash flow to do that. So we are constantly managing our pension costs, meeting up the OPEB obligations, our contractual obligations to the employees, repaying the bridge fund, maintenance, deferred maintenance in infrastructure and equipment are always there on the list of, you know, how do we, how do we fund these? I'll bring back our short-term financial plan because I want to show that we really are on basis. We are, we are doing the monthly, you know, assessments. We're operating on a cash basis and watching what we're doing. We've been able to really put a lot of, you know, we've, we've met our general fund reserve at 25% and some. So we are being able to put cash away for rainy days and for other needs that come up, depending on what council wants. And so I think, you know, when we're looking for other revenue streams, we're always looking for grants or other places that we can have money streams come in. So we're, we are working the short-term plan as we are working our long-term financial plan. So again, the department heads have helped do the controlling of expenditures. Our revenues continue to be strong, but probably not strong enough. And again, revenue enhancement. And that's where we are. So.
Are there questions of the administrative services director? From the council members?
No, it's, it's been well explained.
Thank you.
Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on this item? Don't hurry. I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the city council. Would you care to walk us through the resolutions?
I think that would be helpful so that the public's able to follow along. You have a series of resolutions that you'll be adopting as part of this hearing. It's seven in total and we'll begin with the first one, which is to address your purchasing policy. Actually, a reso for purchasing policy?
Dan, I have six. Are there s-
Sorry, the purchasing policy doesn't have a resolution, my-
Oh, okay.
So we have six. Okay, so the first one is the investment policy. The city generally follows the guidelines for governmental investment that the state has. You've authorized the staff to have a little bit of discretion beyond that, but still within the bounds of what the limitations are by law. As the council knows, we tend to keep our cash in fairly low-interest yield vehicles because the city's generally had a need to be liquid with its money. So we've, we've not really invested significantly, but we do have a policy that guides mis-harm me when we do consider investments. And we did look to this policy to invest the money from the trust, the one, that's the lib, no, the one for the library.
Zimmer.
Zimmer, thank you. The Zimmer money, the generous donation, that was actually the first time we really had to think about a little more sophisticated investment, so. We're asking for you to renew your approval of the investment policy.
May I please have a motion for adoption of resolution number 43-18 to adopt the investment policy of the city of Larkspur?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next is resolution number 44-18.
44-18, we'll note there has a typo in the title, we'll correct that with the word years.
I circled Dan.
I got, I got to it before you could tell me. That's spelled wrong. This is a requirement in the California constitution for all government entities, local government agencies have to adopt an appropriation limit, essentially the amount of money that can be spent during the year. And the administrative services director has suggested annual appropriations subject to 14.7 million and the appropriations limit of 19.4 million. I'm rounding up there from what's in the document. Please seek your approval of the appropriations limitations.
May I please have a motion to adopt resolution number 44-18 establishing appropriation limits for the city of Larkspur for the 2018-19 fiscal year pursuant to article 13 of the California constitution?
I'll, I'll move resolution number 44-18.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, resolution number 45-18.
45-18 is a proposal to renew your general fund reserve policy for the, oh, we have another typo here, next fiscal year, we'll fix that one too, 1819. And as the public often hears us talk about, we have a reserve policy effectively to, to have 25% of the general fund operating expenses available. The council further breaks that down into two categories, a catastrophic reserve, 15%, and a budget stabilization reserve, 10% catastrophic reserve, if something terrible happens and we need to deal with it. Budget stabilization reserve is if one of our revenue streams were to suddenly disappear, we'd have the money on hand to cope with that. We primarily put that one in place out of concern that if one of our major sales tax generators or if our hotel ever went offline for any reason, we had the money available to cope with that till something else replaced it. I would like to note that this policy also speaks to what to do with excess fund balance. And as we've talked about many times, we've been sort of building up excess fund balance for the last few years in anticipation of the bridge project. And so that relates, that comment relates to one of the next resolutions you'll be adopting. But I now request your approval of the reserve policy.
May I please have a motion for 45-18 adopting a general fund reserve policy for the city?
I'll move to adopt resolution 45-18 adopting a general fund reserve policy for the next fiscal year.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, resolution number 46-18.
46-18 asks the council to adopt the salary ranges for all the authorized positions of the city for the upcoming fiscal year. These ranges on this sheet reflect some approvals that you made during, on the consent calendar this evening and will allow us to start the fiscal year on track.
May I please have a motion for 46-18?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Now, 47-18.
So 47-18, this will actually be the last year we present to you with this resolution. This is a resolution we've been bringing to you since the bridge fund lent money to the general fund in a small amount to the Twin Cities Childcare Fund for the purpose of making a payment to CalPERS on the previous side fund that we owed CalPERS. The last few years, we haven't been making those payments. We've been making reduced payments back to the bridge fund, all the while trying to build up that excess cash that we've talked about. So we're excited to report that we can completely repay the loan and still more than meet our reserve policy for the general fund. That means we're keeping that liquidity we've needed all along, that flexibility to manage the bridge project, which, as we've talked about before, at any given time, we could have as many, as much as $4 million that we need to have out, making that project work until we get reimbursed. And ultimately, the bridge fund needs to make our contribution of a local match of 11.5% for a considerable amount of the project. So this would make that, would pay that loan off, the loan would go away and that money would then be in the bridge project, in the bridge fund and tied to the constraints and rules governing the bridge fund. Now I ask for the council's approval.
May I please have a motion for resolution 47-18?
Move to adopt resolution 47-18 approving retirement loan for the bridge fund to the general fund for the Twin Cities Childcare.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Now, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2018-19, resolution number 48-18.
And I'm still showing off my eagle eyes, I saw a typo on this one too.
I did too, I was going to tell you.
The word strong is, should be storm. But other than that, this is, this is the big resolution. We're asking you with this resolution to approve our recommendations for the budget for this year. As we've noted, at this time, the budget we're asking you to approve does show a small deficit of, just shy of $300,000. However, we are cautiously optimistic that the mid-year budget will correct that imbalance. But I think perhaps to note for the record, for the community, this year I've brought this imbalance, this slight deficit, to really underscore the challenge that we're facing and have folks understand, we are in the margin because of these costs that we're being hit with. And we're going to sort them out and we're working on some strategies over the coming fiscal year. But at this time, we do recommend that you adopt this budget as presented.
Is there a motion to adopt resolution number 48-18?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much for all the hard work that's gone into this.
Thank you, Kathy.
Congratulations.
Very much, Kathy.
All right. We have one business item this evening, which is to consider making appointments to the heritage board, Parks and Recre, Parks and Recreation Commission, Planning Commission, and the Marin County Commission on Aging. My understanding is that there's desire from the council to take part in the consideration of the appointment to the Parks and Rec Commission. So I would recommend that we put this off until the June 20 meeting. All right? So we'll continue that, that item. And the next item on the agenda is to adjourn the meeting. May I have a motion? We're going to, do you want to take those up at the same time on the 20th or do we want to just?
[inaudible]
All right. We have a series of recommendations as part of item 8.1. We have appointments to the heritage board, Parks and Recreation Commission, and Planning Commission, Marin County Commission on Aging. We just have one Park and Rec Commission appointment to make on June the 20th. So I guess I'll take a, a motion on the staff recommendation for the other appointments.
You're asking for a motion, aren't you, Dan?
We, we don't normally make recommendations on, on any of the potential appointees, so the recommendations for you to make appointments-
For me to read them into the record.
Well, and perhaps for the clarity for the public, the municipal code calls upon the mayor and vice mayor to interview incumbents who have expressed an interest in being reappointed. The mayor and vice mayor have done that, they have interviewed the incumbents. And so I think perhaps the mayor and vice mayor should reflect for the record if you're recommending all the incumbents be reappointed and then that might clarify for the remainder of the council what motion you might be seeking.
I think there's consensus on the, on the committee that we recommend appointment of the incumbents.
I'm very excited to have them back on the commission and on the boards. Absolutely, they're doing an excellent job.
So can I add just a point of clarification? That means that interviews will be for the non-incumbents coming up?
You have one seat on the Parks and Recreation Commission.
I see.
That's, the incumbent chose not to seek reappointment.
Okay, so that's the interview that the entire, the three people apply?
We conducted interviews before the meeting this evening and we'll bring it back on June the- June the 20th for the council to help in that discussion.
Just for the Park and Rec?
Just for the Park and Rec appointment.
You, you were going to have the council interview the candidates on the meeting.
No, the, the committee interviewed the candidates earlier this evening.
And Dan and I-
We understood after we made the, had the interviews that other members of the council wanted to participate in that appointment.
I think I was just a little confused because usually if it's a non-incumbent, then usually-
I apologize, Mr. Mayor. I think I made a mistake here. The whole council should interview-
The non-incumbents.
The non-incumbents. That was a mistake. I apologize.
So where will we be bringing?
It'd probably be appropriate to ask if the candidates are willing to be interviewed again on the 20th by the entire council.
And they should not have a problem with that, Dan. I think they'd be-
As long as they're available.
As long as they're available.
Calendar can be challenging.
That's true.
And that's just the non-incumbents? Okay, great.
That's how the process works.
I was confused about that earlier.
But in the meanwhile, Mr. Mayor, do you want to announce who's on the Planning Commission and Park and Rec and Heritage? No, you go for it.
Can I borrow your list?
Oh.
The incumbents for the Planning Commissioner, Daniel Kunsler, Laura Tauber. Congratulations. We very, very much value your service there. For the Parks and Recreation Commission, the incumbent is Lisbeth Sunshine. Congratulations. Heritage Board, Hillary Colhane and Jan Hubble. Congratulations. We very much appreciate all the hard work that goes into that. And the Commission on Aging is Judith Safran. She's been very helpful.
Mr. Mayor, Jan Hubble is not an incumbent for-
Oh, I'm sorry. I made, I made a mistake.
So you, the, the council wants to interview that candidate, we should invite them back on the 20th as well.
Please do so. All right, with that, do I need to, do we need anything else other than I hereby appoint the incumbents?
The council, these ones should be approved by the council. So I think a motion to take all the incumbents up would be appropriate and fine.
May I please have a motion to take all the incumbents in an appointment?
We'll move to reappoint the incumbents to their respective positions for the next term.
Relative to Planning Commission, Parks and Rec Commission, Heritage Board, Commission on Aging.
Correct.
May I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank goodness.
Selecting your contact for individuals.
If the, Mr. Mayor, if you're comfortable with this too, it's, it's not required that all five of you be together to do the interviews. So if we're having calendaring problems and the mayor's comfortable, since the mayor and the vice mayor had a chance to meet the candidates, we could try to schedule other times for the other council members. I'll try for the 20th, but sometimes as we hit the summer, these things get a little trickier to, to schedule.
I'm okay with your approach.
Okay, so as a backup, we'll, we'll do it committee-wise. All right.
All right. A motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. We adjourn the meeting at 8:08.